A Select Board meeting has been called to order for Brookline at 7:04 PM. I apologize for the delay. We have not had any Internet access here, so our Zoom is going to be audible and we'll pass the phone as people talk. All right. So hello David, hello Gwen, hello Peter, is there anybody else? And hello FAX TV, is there anybody else that is participating in the meeting at this time? We can't see.
Nope, there's nobody else here but us.
Okay, thank you very much David. All right, we'll go on to item number two, review changes to the agenda if any. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Stan?
Yes, I'm wondering if we as a Select Board responsible for the expenditures that are occurring have the ability to modify the accounts payable warrants that we received this afternoon and add one name to it and a dollar amount to amend it so that an individual who's been waiting for their payment since the 7th of July can now be paid rather than waiting another two weeks?
I think that can be done when we do the accounts payable, when we do the motion, and then we have discussion, we can add it at that time. That's a good point, thank you. Please bring that up when we get two accounts payable. Perfect. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item number three, review and approved minutes from the July 21st, 2021 Select Board meeting. Okay, we're going page by page. Anybody have any items from page one of three?
I have one on page one.
All right Gwen, what is on page one?
Under the two wired guys, car tree service, you're going to add that. It says Ms. Maggio will inform the listers. I think that means you will inform the people on that list of providers, correct? Not our lister-listers?
Or the treasurer.
Oh, or the treasurer. All right, yes. What's the best way of wording that Gwen?
I don't know.
Oh, Ms. Maggio will inform. Yes, I have. Yeah, we don't need to inform anybody about this list, it's for town purposes.
Strike it.
Strike it. Thank you.
Because I think there were the reasons you had said, I believe it was treasurer, because they wouldn't, the process of handling it, if they knew they're on the accepted list would be different than if they were not on the accepted list?
Well, the treasurer-
From the treasurer standpoint?
We can modify that to say Ms. Maggio will inform the treasurer of the update to the vendor list.
That sounds good.
All right, Peter, we'll do that amendment to that sentence. Thank you. I also have an item under list of approved vendors, first sentence, it says there was a discussion of the current list, Mr. Noga discussed Kerry Born and Norm Holden, Norm Holt, it would have been Holden, H-O-L-D-E-N. That's just the spelling of his last name. Anything else on page one? Hearing none, we'll move to page two. I have an item on page two, under wheeled excavator, one, two, three, four, fifth sentence, at the end, it says Ms. Maggio suggested that the former committee be informed. Actually, it was Mr. Jones suggested that the former committee be informed, correct? Okay. Anything else on page two? Bruce?
If I can find it. Actually, sorry, let me just back up a second. I suppose that's not technically true because I was not at this meeting, so I couldn't have said that at that last meeting. So I mentioned it previously, but-
Yes, that's what I'm recalling.
I couldn't have actually made that. I did make that suggestion two meetings ago.
Right.
But I didn't make it at the last meeting.
Okay, so-
It was said, and I'm wondering if you were-
Which also brings the point that I should be removed from the attending on page one, Peter, also.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep, I think I was just referring to that Ms. Maggio was going to notify the former committee, which I did do. All right, maybe that's what it was. Ms. Maggio agreed to notify the former committee. That's fine, thank you, point that out. Okay, page three of three, any, oh wait, one more. Bruce has something on page two.
Peter, under building commission report, the first sentence, Mr. Mello had met with Susie, S-U-S-I-E, it's S-U-Z-Y, that's it.
Yeah, hold on, go back to the last thing because that's a whole sentence there.
Ms. Maggio-
And given the opportunity to come before the-
Yes.
Former committee of the opportunity.
Yes.
Got it.
To come before the Select Board and to contribute to the discussions. That's fine.
I have one more on page two.
All right, and then Bruce had the Susie spell change, and Stan has an item.
Yes, Peter, I'm wondering if, I know you've exercised discretion phraseology in all of the minutes, if in the, on page two, the word bugs might be better expressed by the term insects?
I'm sorry, that was on the agenda.
Was it?
Verbatim.
Well, I guess in light of that, I'm not going to, I'll remain quiet.
All right. All right, anything else on page two? Page three? Bruce?
I don't know if this is right or not. Mr. Noga discussed the fence post for the ball field, place it, it's very small, excuse me, placed in shed next to coal patch, offered to assist with installation. Mr. Bills will notify a couple of days in advance where he can store the sign. It seems to be the signs were already stored. It seems like you're storing a second time, the very last sentence, third, just above communications.
This is what was said, I will take it out.
Wait, I don't know if it's right or not, Peter.
The scoreboard thing?
Right.
To be put into town garage. Oh, I know what he's saying. I had asked about the ball field sign.
Yeah, and-
And so what might have been caught of that was that I had offered to help Mark remove the sign and bring it to the garage to be stored. It looks like what's happened here is there's an abbreviated summary of that statement that might be clarified a little bit.
Yes, I could follow it.
Right, well, we're talking about posts, and then Mr. Bills will notify a couple of days in advance when he can store the sign. There must be another sentence in there about the sign.
When he can help remove the sign.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to help remove the sign if Mark desired that assistance, and then the sign was going to be stored at the town garage. And I think that's what that sentence is referring to, so. We were going to get together, but Mark was going to define his schedule and let me know when it was convenient for him to do that, and then the sign was going to be stored at the garage. I don't know how you want to say that. That's what the intent of that was.
Got that, Peter?
Yeah, did that actually happen?
Did the sign get brought to the garage yet?
In light of what other things-
No, not because, no, because of the storm, it has not been.
Okay, I'll clarify that.
Thank you. Anything else on the agenda for review? Hearing none, we will make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the Wednesday, July 21st, 2021 minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and abstain from David?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And David Jones has abstained. All right, thank you. We'll now move on to scheduled members of the public, we have none. And Zoomers, do you see anybody else besides, nobody else has joined the meeting for unscheduled? No, okay.
No, there's nobody else.
All right, now we're going to move to new business, and we can start with Mr. Bills, flash flood damage report from Thursday the 29th of 2021. Mr. Bills, I'll let you just do a summary, I needed a lot of work this week.
Yes, so Thursday evening, severe weather came across the TV, and I was called out by the police for a flash flood on Putney Mountain, and had a very tough time getting to Putney Mountain due to the excessive rain. Heard from three different sources, they collected over five inches of rain that evening in a couple hours' time. And every culvert on Putney Mountain from bottom to top had been covered over with stick debris floating out of the woods, and then the gravel packing it in to the inlets of each culvert clear to the top. And so by the time I gave Archie a call, Archie met me on Putney Mountain, and by then the rain was letting up, and we, Archie's son, little Arch, three of us with shovels hiked up toward Johnny Swings and was able to turn a little bit of the water that was, it actually ate a hole under the pavement, like four foot diameter, and made its own passage under the pavement as well as over the pavement, and was hammering material down over the bank against the, next to the last house up Putney Mountain Road, the home of Ed Schaefer. And at that one point, he thought he was going to lose the house, the river was going both sides. You could hear the boulders tumbling through the culvert, and it, there's a four foot culvert there aimed at his house, and the water was just shooting straight. And so he thought the house was going to go away, but fortunately, what happened, the floodwater coming off the mountain brought down sticks and limbs, packed them behind trees, and then reverted the water away from the culvert that we're working. So it was a, it ate out holes that were seven and eight feet deep and 12 feet across, almost the entire lane on Putney Mountain. And I believe that it's not quite a mile, maybe three quarters of a mile of road damage. And so I went around and checked the rest of the roads that evening after everybody was safe, and came back early the next morning, and after talking with Archie, had some equipment in his gravel pit, and brought his trucks into town, and started right in, immediately bringing material to fill in the ruts. And by the end of the second day, it made it passable so that the last two residents on Putney Mountain could safely drive in and out. And since then, with thanks to Archie's crew again, A.S. Clark's, they've continued to work toward the top of the mountain. And I checked tonight before the meeting, and we have maybe another six or 700 feet to go before the lanes will be passable for traffic. Now, that doesn't mean that the road's finished, it's far from finished. Using rough coarse material just to fill in the waterways that ate through the road. And we also had to use one excavator along ahead of the fill-in crew to open up the inlets of every culvert. The outlets were fine, the culverts were clean, it just, the material quickly covered the inlets and therefore stopped the water from flowing. And the waterfalls, if you've ever driven Putney Mountain, those beautiful waterfalls, had clogged the main inlets on there where the culverts are, and sent that water from those waterfalls all the way down to the second hairpin turn, cutting across, making it impossible for traffic to flow. So Putney Mountain really took a beating. Bennett Road is a right-hand turn off from Putney Mountain after the second hairpin turn going up the mountain, and that road is totally gone too. There's five culverts and several water bars to the top of the road, and they're all, the road's just torn up. And that being a trail, we have no funded money that'll bring that road back up to shape. The only funding that we have that will be available is state funding for Class II and III. So in the meantime, I had made a call to Mark Pickren at V-Trans, and he was very busy going from town to town estimating damage for federal relief. And he did show up on Saturday while we were working, and he took pictures and got some numbers from us for measurements of erosion, and he was going back to his office to come up with a repair price for Putney Mountain. He was also checking our other infrastructures, bridges that may have been jeopardized, and I gave him a list of areas that I had witnessed that were washed out and perhaps jeopardized. And so we are waiting to hear back what the report was for that. So with like a four to six person crew working on the mountain, the mountain is coming back to shape quicker than a lot of us thought. And we took some of the crew and went completely around town to areas where we had cones and reflective barrels for one lane undermined problems. There was a small structure, it's a stone arch bridge by Kirsch Road, the road intersects with Townsend Road. The water got behind the embutment on the inlet side, and washed away material as low as eight feet deep. And we were able to compact some very coarse road builder material down the hole and bring it up to road surface, which we will continue to monitor that, and then if it needs more, we'll compact some more before it's sealed over with pavement. And there was a lot of road shoulders that disappeared under guardrails from water flowing up and across the road. And one and a half good days around to all those sites, we now have everything, I'm going to say 90 to 95% back in shape. There's still, will be some details to attend to, but for the most part, Brookline is almost back together. And so it was a little unfortunate event, just glad that it wasn't any longer or any more rain. Hopefully, our August and September is a dry one.
We hope.
Thank you, Mark. And I'll have to reach out to Archie again and thank him and his crew for all the equipment and manpower that they put on the project to get it done with less than a week. I really thought it was going to take a few, several, a couple of weeks.
I was thinking three, four, when I first saw it.
So we'll just keep an eye on what we have and be thankful for moving on, and it could have been worse, I suppose. All right, anything else? All right, we had some flood. So then we're going to move on to old business, Mark. I know you've had a busy week. If you would like for us to table, A, which is the wheeled excavator purchase discussion and research, if you're not prepared, I understand.
Yeah, I didn't get much time to pursue. I would like to ask, you know, I would like to ask the board if they would like to perhaps rent that particular machine for a one month rental. Two, A's would be, I think we could use another mowing, I'm not sure how everybody else feels about roadside mowing. We did it early, we've had so much rain, and it's like tropical weather, the grass and the brush just continued to thrive during the wet month of June and July with the humidity. So I was thinking it would be a machine that, I do have some culverts to install, and I would replace it as well as maybe do a one week mowing. As, you know, there's details that I, an excavator if the town would like to rent one month.
Take the phone call to see if one would be available with a mowing.
Guys, guys, do you have multiple, you've got multiple devices connected, so we're getting a lot of feedback.
We didn't get Zoom up online here, but hold on, we're going to have to turn off the one device.
Yeah, you got to turn something off.
You want to do the Zoom from here?
No, I'm going to leave here, so we'll be good.
Hold on. Yeah, I'm going to hang up. So you'll be in here. All right. Testing, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Testing, testing, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're pretty good.
Okay, so I'm-
But I can also hear myself, so you got to manage the speaker part of it.
All right, how about now?
That's much better.
All right, we just unplugged one of the cables. All right, so we took out one of the sound cables. All right, well, we're now working off with the speaker on the laptop. We're going to continue on. Mark, we'll just let you talk to the machine.
So yes, Dot's question was, we were going to talk about perhaps looking into a purchase of another machine for Brookline for road use. And I think that we should wait a little bit longer, but maybe rent one instead of talk about the purchase. Just if I could get permission to go and rent for one month, which will be like $7,000 to $8,000.
Would any of the work be FEMA or roadwork from the storm that maybe we could get some reimbursement from?
The one major project I would like to complete is the Betterback Road Grant on Parker Road, which would be a culvert and stone lined ditches.
Okay.
And that's kind of like an ideal tool for that job. And also, I feel like there's opportunity for roadside mowing again. A lot of it's thrown back, and that one machine can do both. So if debt was put on for a week, maybe four days to do mowing, and then use the bucket to-
Have you, I'm just wondering if it's available and how many other, because even in today's newspaper, it says that machinery is very limited.
Yes, I made two calls to try and find out the availability and price, you know, to get you a secure price, and no call back. So I'm not sure if a person was out or called too late, but I can pursue that a little further. I would like to, if we could do it sooner than later, well, the August board, so maybe the next meeting I could-
All right, I was going to say, if you really felt that you needed something next week, we could hold an emergency meeting and for approval of the rental and do that via Zoom even, or that. All right.
I'll make contact with you if that should be the problem, but-
Otherwise, we'll put it on the agenda for two weeks from now.
Yeah. And we've done very similar venture, a machine for culvert work, and it just worked so great for installing culverts. The other thing is, when I made that call to order culverts, they were the four to six weeks out because of the demand and lack of. So WW brought me four, we have 11 coming to towns soon. It's been like three weeks, so another three weeks. And I need to at least get the ones in on Parker Road to meet the grant by October.
All right. All right, so do a little research on it if you want us to hold a meeting. I can, we can have something next week, if not, we'll do it in two weeks.
Sure.
Perfect. All right, so find out if they have one available, I think, and the price of that. So otherwise, we'll put off or table the purchase discussion at this time.
I do feel that we should wait, and there's a process to it. And so if we could all maybe sit together and I'll explain some of why I feel it should be overtime.
Okay.
Yeah.
When do you want to do that?
correct? Maybe September 1st will be a good date.
Okay. So we'll table wheeled excavator discussion until September 1st's meeting?
Yeah. And, you know, if we can go ahead and get our grants done, and then go through this process of weighing out all the options to find something.
Okay, that makes, that makes much sense. You're right.
Hey Dot?
Yes, sir?
Can I just add one thing to the wheeled excavator? I have the, I found before the call, I have the RFP that we put out at the recommendation of the committee. When the committee was formed, they went through and determined some, which, you know, whether these are still the parameters that we would want to use is another discussion. But they defined some parameters of what kind of equipment might be suitable. And we put out an RFP and published an RFP and circulated it to a bunch of vendors. In the end, nobody submitted or no responses essentially from the RFP. But I have the RFP, which has some details that could be useful for us as we start a discussion. So I'll send that around to everybody after this, so we have it for when we get to it.
Oh, perfect, okay. Stan has a question to ask.
Well, it's more of an offering of information, not knowing what the needs specifically are, but knowing that there is a focus by town employees on that particular device. I went on the Internet, and there's probably- device. I went on the internet and there's probably between 12 and 15 different two-wheel excavators that are currently, uh, for sale. Prices range from 42,000 and, uh, there's probably eight to 10 that were less than 105,000. There were a number that were in the 60 to 80,000 dollar, probably four. And then there were some that were up in the three and 400,000 range. So they're out there. Um, they seem to have a lot of miles on them or hours of usage. Uh, I think the one that had 10,000 or 8,000, I'm sorry, 8,000 hours plus. There was one of those available for 68 or 72,000. Uh, there were a couple of others that had 10 plus thousand miles on them. So, uh, not knowing what kind of warranty one would get from those, uh, in the dealerships, they're reasonable, or at least a used one can be reasonably purchased, it would seem.
Yeah. Yeah, and those are all, that's, those are good, uh, things to look at. And there's a lot of, uh, information that we could, uh, use with those. Uh, when we were looking, I think we had a set price, uh, at the time. And then there were certain specs that we looked at and, um, the, the functions were a big issue. But also, uh, I think there's more and more available becoming, I mean, not right now, but more machine companies are, are coming on board in making these wheel excavators a medium size. And we were looking at medium. They, they make small ones. They make large ones. We, we were looking at some middle of the road, uh, and, but one thing I think we should do is, is come to an agreement on what we want, what price range we want, and then call the, the dealers because if we wait too long, then it seems like they wanna play ball and they wanna raise the price up. So if we, you know, if you rent a new one, sometimes they have that rent to own, or it doesn't have to be new. They'll use your rental toward the purchase. And then that's one way of playing it. And then there's a lease and there's a regular buyout. But, um, I think that we should all be on board with, with the right machine, the right number and then pursue.
I think then on the September 1st, we'll put enough time for a thorough discussion with research that everybody has made and, and we can say what we might want to purchase at that time, or what, what town would be best for the town. I think Stan had a question and then Bruce.
Yeah, just one more tidbit of information. Of all of those that were online, there were only two in New England. If you want to consider New York State as New England. Uh, that was under 80,000. And there was another one under 80,000 in the state of Rhode Island. But it's not like there were a number in Vermont or, or Massachusetts or New Hampshire. Those, those were the closest that would be found online.
I know for a fact our local dealers, the Capota dealers, the John Deere dealers are, their lots are bare. They have next to nothing available.
Bruce, you wanted to say something?
Just to circle around, back to the beginning, you asked, you made a request to rent for a month. Where are we gonna, we gonna entertain that out at the beginning of next month? Or you want to do this now or at the?
Well, I'm gonna pursue to make sure there's one out there who's mentioned, like Stan just mentioned.
Okay.
And I did make some calls, but nothing came back. And, uh, so I'll, I'll go after that and see.
It will be on the agenda for two weeks from now unless you find something that needs to be signed off sooner, which case I will call a special meeting with 48 hours of.
Okay.
All right. Okay, um, all right. So we have things on the agenda for September 1st and, um, we'll talk about renting the excavator at the next, next meeting, if not sooner. Anything else right now? We can move on?
No.
Um, now we're gonna talk about the Round Schoolhouse Grant, the, uh, the Preservation Trust of Vermont. Stan, you did some research and, um, we're gonna go through what we have here. I'll turn the machine around so the speaker gets you. Okay?
Oh, yeah. Um, the first item, number one, is, uh, the billing payment of $3,000 that, uh, we had billed back on the 9th of July to the Preservation Trust of Vermont. We got on the 29th of this month, uh, I should say of, of, uh, July, a check for $3,000. The check and the cover letter, letter were dated July 19th. The date was mailed to the town in Brookline was July 28th. Don't know why there was that delay, but it is, was, uh, received. Uh, a letter, an email was sent to the town treasurer and board members that we had gotten the money. And hopefully it would be on the pay warrant for this particular meeting. Uh, for what reason, one does not know. The, it is not on the pay warrant, but, uh, we have the funds now in our.
I don't hear anything.
We just lost your audio, guys.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay.
Stan, you cut off right as you were, you had detailed the dates of, and that we would, we should have the money now for the 3,000 and then you cut off at that point.
Yeah, yeah, we do have it. It is in coffers. Uh, it just needs to go through the process of being paid. Uh, I have updated Mr. Parker along the way. They had asked up PVT or PTV, uh, three times when that money was gonna be received by the town. Cause I know he's been, the, the vendor's been patiently waiting and I, I never could get an answer. Uh, it, I would like to interject, another thought that has occurred is at one point near the tail end of July, the field rep for the Preservation Trust of Vermont indicated they were gonna send to the town the entire $5,000 and leave it up to the town to approve the work as it goes along, uh, and simply advise Preservation Trust of Vermont that it has been done and send them the documentation to support, uh, our statement of it being acceptable and that the board has in fact voted on it. Uh, so, uh, we did get within the, uh, first day or two of this week, that additional $2,000, uh, which I suspect is probably now in our checking account or the appropriate fund. And, uh, so that is now in our hands and available to be dispersed. And you will note that in this evening's pay warrant, uh, accounts, accounts payable warrant, I'm sorry, uh, there is a $1,500 amount, which is the invoice amount received from Norm Holden Painting. So that will be taken care of, I suspect, very shortly. Uh, next issue, so if there are any questions on that, I'll go to the, the sign summary. We, we, we post, uh, a request for signage to five different entities. Uh, and to make things simplified, I'll say this. Of the five people contacted, only one was willing to, uh, provide a sign that is of the same material, same painting, same design to match what is currently on the building, other than it being upgraded. Everyone else wanted to use a, uh, vinyl sheet to which the current sign data would be painted with a computerized graphics device. And then that would be pasted or glued to, in one case, a plastic plaque that resembles the shape of what we have currently. Another one would have used aluminum of two different thicknesses. Uh, one said he'd put it on plywood, but again, it would be a vinyl cover. So it wasn't what we wanted. So the only, the only, um, uh, vendor who would comply with our, uh, desires submitted an envelope, which Dot has in her hand at this very moment, um, and, uh, has expressed a willingness to complete it. Uh, I've talked with him on the phone a couple of times. Uh, the last conversation was letting him know that he'd have perhaps a little longer because the requirement of being done by August 1st has been kind of relegated to the town with that additional disbursement of the final monies and, and P, and the Preservation Trust of Vermont, uh, saying that they would give us additional time to make sure the work is completed. And then the fact that they've already sent us the money said that, you know, they're in agreement with letting the town take control of that, so to speak, in terms of as long as we indicate it's satisfactory. Now, I haven't read the bid yet, but what Mr., uh, uh, Stats, Michael Stats indicated is that his estimate is $650. Uh, he did indicate, well, this is a slightly, it includes what he discussed as a range. So I, I will not, I'm not gonna modify what he has provided in writing of being an estimate of $650. As a comparison, I had someone say they would, uh, just to give you an idea of, uh, cost comparison, since we're now making a decision tonight. Uh, one person said they would apply a plastic sign on three-quarter inch plywood and their cost for doing it would be $662. So this bid of doing it manually and making it more representative of the character and quality of what we currently have seems like a reasonable bid. If anyone's interested in going over the other, other bids, uh, other information, which I had sent out a couple, few days ago, I'd be happy to, to answer any concerns or questions.
What did Lotus want to do?
Lotus.
Is that cool? Did the sign close at West River Lodge?
Yeah.
It looked like Ray's letter.
West River Stables.
West River Stables.
Uh, West River Lodge.
Oh, I was thinking.
Yeah. Which sign did you look at?
Wrong one.
Wrong one.
Okay, yeah.
All right, well, um.
Still don't answer it? Do I have an answer to that or no?
I'm gonna, uh, call the question and, and, and make a motion, um, that, that we move to approve the $650 bid given by Michael Stats to duplicate the materials and content of the current sign. And it will be done by early September, the latest. And, um, I'd like to have a second for that motion.
I'll second that.
David seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving a bid from Michael Stats for $650 to, for the sign at the Round Schoolhouse, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any ayes? All right, the motion has passed. Um, Mr. Stat, Mr. Noah, would you like to contact Michael since you've been, and, uh, tell him that we would love to have his work again on our building?
Would be my pleasure.
All right, thank you very much.
Could you spell the names?
M I C H A E L Stats. S T A A T S. Of New, of Newfane.
No.
S is in Sam, T A.
Yeah. S T A A T S. C is Brooklyn.
Stats, thanks.
Okay, um.
Next, you want to go on to powder postpedals?
Well, actually you skipped one. Window work evaluation approval to submit for payment.
Oh, okay.
Let's do that real quick.
Yes, I, well, I got under science on this one. Oh, I'm sorry, number two. All right, yes, yes. Uh, had, the window work was completed of the 27th of July, ahead of the date that we had required. An invoice was submitted on the 29th via email. And, uh, I, I think I might afford it along to you and/or ask that you also take a look at the work to see if it met everyone's satisfaction. I believe, I know I have looked at it both inside and out. I believe, uh, Bruce has done so. I don't know if anyone else has.
Not inside, but I walked around and looked at it. Yep.
Anyone have any problems or issues with the work that was done?
Looks beautiful.
Does. Did a good job. Yeah, yeah. And he was very accurate. I mean, the lines of his browding was, uh, nicely done.
Nice job.
Right, so I, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve the work that was done by Norm Holden at the Round Schoolhouse and approve the payment of $1,500 towards his bill. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the, uh, work done at the Round Schoolhouse by Norm Holden for $1,500, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Very good.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask another comment.
Is that here?
Who was the second, please?
Who seconded it? Bruce, Bruce Mellow.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a, another comment on that particular subject. Uh, again, several days ago, I sent out a copy of the package that I'm going to send along to the Preservation Trust of Vermont. At that point in time, we had not received the money. And, uh, so the phraseology in some portions of that was changed by me. Uh, instead of, uh, let's see if I can, I changed to, uh, the, the heading below the town of Brookline, I changed it to Brookline Round Schoolhouse Advisory, colon, vendor work completion, town approval of work, and advisement of payment approval, instead of request for payment approval. And I specified Norm Holden as the vendor. Uh, I indicated that we would be sending them a package of materials. And that was not in the example that I sent you. And there's one other thing that I felt was appropriate to include in this, given that we've earned their trust, they're working with us and I wanna, I, hopefully we all work with them. I included another, uh, small paragraph in this advisory to consolidate emails. In the, uh, envelope with the check for $3,000, the CEO of Preservation Trust of Vermont requested that we place a sign on the Round Schoolhouse advising them, advising whoever read that sign, that the Freeman Foundation and the Preservation Trust of Vermont both were involved in the total of $25,000 grant that the town of Brookline received. It's kind of a, a, a credit, they called it a credit line, advising others that, hey, we did this for this town and please be aware of it. And I felt that it was obviously appropriate that we should do that, which can be another issue for later this meeting or next meeting as to how we're gonna do that, what we're gonna say, whatever. But I did include a paragraph and it actually reads, "The town of Brookline is working on placing a credit line," in quotations, "sign, as suggested in a letter of Ben Doyle dated 7/19/21 and mail stamp 7/28/21. Before that, this sign will be sent to you upon its installation."
I have a question. Can that line, credit line be added to the signage that Tom, that Mike Stats is going to do?
I will be happy to ask that. That's a good idea. Uh, it probably should stay up on the building, I, I thought. That was my only hesitancy in not doing it, but it kind of makes sense when you stand back and look at it. It's a good suggestion. Uh, if you'd like, I don't know if Michael will keep the same price, but, uh, I can't imagine, given all the other verges, that he'd increase it by much. Uh, so.
If he changes the price, bring it back to the board, I'm sure you have.
Okay, okay. I will ask him.
I will ask, if you could ask him upon winning the bid to add that line of credit as her request from the grantor.
Right, okay, we'll do that.
Stan, could you email me the details of that last bid?
Oh, sure. If you, uh, if you've got my email off the town website, I think they have emails and phone numbers. Just email me a, a line to remind me. I mean, I know I won't forget, but now, rather than trouble you now for an email address. And just drop me a note and I will get it right out to you.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So now we'll move on to powder postpedals, chemical application and discussion.
Uh, turns out that someone like myself, as a member of the SLIC board or any other volunteer, cannot just go and apply pesticide. It is not a, uh, restricted chemical. And this particular chemical that I'm focusing on is called Borah space K, C A B E. There was another one called, in one article, Tim Bor, and then another article, Tim Nor. And that was one word, T I M N O R. And that was one word, P-I-M-N-O-R and T-I-M-B-O-R. The one that's most effective is Boracade. It's essentially the same chemical, but it has a composition, given the additives, of penetrating further into the wood, uh, providing better coverage and less opportunity for callback because they weren't killed. Uh, so I'm, I'm recommending to whoever we hire, uh, since the only way I could possibly do it is if I take two exams after studying two manuals. Uh, and that, to me, doesn't seem a realistic solution. So that's, so, so there is need of a licensed and certified, uh, person to, uh, perform the service that's needed for that building and/or the apparent termite infestation we have here in the town office.
I have a question, Stan. Um, is the infestation localized to the furniture or has it spread to the building itself? Because if it's just in the furniture, I would vote to get it out, the furniture removed.
It's in the floor, it's in the walls.
Ah, it's in the floor and the walls and, and windowsills as well.
Really? In the windowsill?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I was, when I was in there after and before, Norm Holden did his window repair, and he took the windows out of their frames and worked on them on, created a flat surface on, I guess, sawboards or something. I noticed there was one, uh, pile of powder on the, uh, wainscoting, and all the other piles of powder that I saw were in the furniture in the room. Uh, I did not see any new powder, uh, on the floor, uh, but I know, I think Bruce is going to modify that a little bit.
I do.
Okay.
When, when were you asking about the windows?
Yeah.
I went to next, I went to next stand and looked at the windows, and of course, a snotty nose went around, looked around at everything. And yes, definitely, it's very little, but it's like when Mark and I saw it back, early spring, Mark?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, a little bit, we saw the furniture, but we saw it here and there, and we, and we, and we treated it with a linseed oil. And Haskins, Stephen Haskins, recommended that that's how we handle it, is just keep treating it with a linseed oil. You're, you're going for a more permanent approach, which is kind of a bad idea, but we just got to find somebody to, to apply.
If, if this, this, this particular insecticide apparently is a common, it costs $86 a gallon. You use a one-to-one ratio with water. There's a special process you use mixing it. You got to be very persistent in mixing it as you're pouring it into the container of water. Uh, and you kind of got to shake it up, and you have to use either a very, very well-made plastic sprayer and/or use a metal one, which is designed for such chemicals as them.
All right, I'm going to make a suggestion that, uh, further discussion on the chemical application for the powder post beetles, uh, be tabled, I would need to see, I, I'm thinking that the committee needs to be made aware that we need to look at the resources that the Round Schoolhouse has to pay for this and find out how much it might cost to, to do it. It won't be much, you don't think?
What? A hundred dollars? A hundred dollars to take this?
We have to hire somebody.
Yeah, I know that.
Well, I, 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 I thought about that, and I, I, it, it, you will note that I also sent you a paper with, I think, five different pest inspection companies. Four of them haven't even responded. The only one was Abatum, and they were willing to come and look at the infestation that we wanted to. At the time, I was talking about the Round Schoolhouse, and the fee that was quoted to me was $125. And at the end of that, if we decided to hire that firm, the $125 would be credited to whatever the cost is to exterminate the pest. I will tell you this, and this is in Massachusetts where my parents' house was. There was one, it was, my, the parents' house had a house breezeway and an attached garage. On the furthest wall from the house, there was wood that I had piled from a tree that I had cut down in their yard. They never used the wood for their fireplace. So when they both passed and we were trying to sell it, I took the wood away from the building and noted that there could be a termite problem. My brother, who lived in Massachusetts, was closer, hired a firm to come take a look in. Now, this was a, an area that probably was at most 10 feet long, was not completely in need of replacement, but simply needed the pest exterminator. He hired a local exterminator, and my brother is very miser oriented, he doesn't spend money loosely, found a party who would do it for $1,200. They exterminated the affected area and then placed, uh, little things that you pop into the ground and apparently disperse a chemical over an extended period of time. And so I'm using that cost as a guesstimate of what this could potentially be. And now, if you're looking at the town office with termites, you could probably double that, unless you could strike a deal for doing two buildings for a one or one and a half building price.
I would get one too.
Actually, Stan, I'm familiar with what you're saying. The, what gets placed in the ground are treated pieces of wood that has a chemical that when they eat it, they bring it back to the queen. And so they come and regularly pull up and see if they're being eaten and if they need to have more point, more bait put into the, the ground.
So this particular barricade, they don't need to actually do that. All they need to do is spray up two feet from the surface of the ground on the exterior of the building, as well as directly treat, if you have termites downstairs, which we probably do, uh, they would spray it directly on those materials and materials within a two-foot distance of that affected area. So, uh, it, it's, it, it dries in 24 hours. It's, it's okay to touch it after it's, uh, dried, uh, and it kills the insects almost on contact. Uh, it prevents them from eating and breathing, apparently. And, uh, so it's a, it's kind of a, it, not a permanent fix, but I believe they guarantee it for about a year. Anyway, that's the sum of that.
All right, Stan, what is your recommendation?
I think we should ask Abatum to come and take a look at it and give us a quote. I mean, it's not committing to thousands of dollars.
Your cue.
Well, whatever the board decides. It would seem to me, if we got him here for one, we'd probably want to check the other. And I will say this, when I went over and looked at the windows the day that, uh, uh, Norm indicated that he was done, I came over and looked at the southwest corner of our building here. If you, any of you want, at your leisure, to look behind the electrical conduit that goes into our building, you're going to see mud tubes from termites, about six tubes wide.
Really?
Yes. And this stuff, if you spray it two foot high around the building and those tubes, it will kill them in the tubes, as well as prevent them climbing up the side of the building.
All right, well, I think that that's a good recommendation. Um, I don't think we need to vote on it, but we can get a consensus. I would say spend the $125 to ask, to get an estimate, and which can be applied towards treatment in the future. Is there anybody who opposes getting that $125 estimate?
Trying to make a motion to expend $125.
All right, go ahead.
I, I, I motion that the select board, uh, hire Abatum for $125 to do the inspection. And the only, uh, well, if I can get them to do it for both buildings, I assume they wouldn't double it, they're already here, so.
Yeah, really?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll ask, I'll try to negotiate that to $125. Because then they get the, the cleaning up of both buildings, which in the long run is going to be more money for them, so, and to our chagrin. But nevertheless, I would be willing, so I make that motion. We hire Abatum to do inspection for $125.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of hiring Abatum Pest Control to do the inspection fee for $125, which is applicable to a bill if we do hire them, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. I, I will add this, by the way, so you're, you're up on it fully. Abatum told me it would take them two to three weeks to get out here because this is their busy time of year. But that's the best that can be done, given the response we got.
All right, very good. Thank you, Stan, for that work. Um, all right, what do you think we should do about the, uh, infected desk furniture?
Any response from the historic commission?
No, I got no response from the historical committee about the, um, concern about the damage being done by the insects.
I would volunteer to bring those, those pieces of, uh, furniture, and I don't know about the bookcases, but the ones that originally brought it into the building, to the dump on a Saturday morning, and just put it into the, uh, building supply dumpster, if that's possible. And David, I guess you'd know more about that than I would, uh, whether they'll take it and, uh, what their charge might be.
Uh, I, I don't know. I, I guess I would question whether we should be, well, we, I think we would want to let them know that we, that it's infested with powder post beetles because they may not necessarily want it where everything else goes, maybe.
My, my, my knowledge, they've all been advised in an email or a letter, it's sent via.
Sorry, I'm talking about the solid waste management district. I'm talking about where, wherever we would take this, I'm just saying.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, so anybody have a burn pile?
I do, but it won't be torch for, it'll probably fall once the leaves go down, but you could keep it on the side when it's ready to go.
All right, well, I think that, I, I think that's a good point. It needs to probably be incinerated rather than spreading the infection other places. So it needs to be removed, removed from the building, and, um, I, I think I know somebody else who has a burn pile, get ready to go pretty soon.
I think I know who it is.
Yeah.
All right, so one other comment. I, there, there was a piece of infested furniture that was placed in the toilet section of the shed. I removed that because there's lots of sawdust on it, and put it on top of the, the metal frame desk out in the open area. Hopefully, nothing has happened and no further infestation has materialized.
All right, so that's what we'll do.
Burn barrel. Barrel.
We could disassemble the pieces.
We could. All right, well, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it incinerated. Uh, the next item on here was, uh, I just wanted to let you know, we, there's the, the Round Schoolhouse will be cleaned on August 16th, around 2:00. We'll have to run power for the vacuum across Grassy Brook Road and have some cones out to slow people down, but, uh, that, that room will be cleaned by, um, uh, our vendor, David LeBlanc. I can't think of the name of this company offhand. Okay, so that's just a piece of information. And then the last item was, Stan, you, you have a list of other things that need attention. I think when we get through this, we can quickly summarize it, but I will write a letter to the committee again, one more time, telling them about the, that we're going to incinerate the, the furniture where necessary, um, that we're going to have an inspection, that we're getting it clean, and that there's additional work that needs to be done. And you can quickly summarize what some of that work might be for our residents who might be watching Zoom.
Well, we can do that, or in light of the delay today, we can table that and put it to the next meeting.
We can table it, that's fine.
Would that be all right?
That would be fine.
Okay. I recommend we table that issue too.
All right, we will table the Round Schoolhouse repairs. Okay.
I will need to talk about the barn boards, though.
Okay, so talk about the barn boards.
It, on the front porch forum, there's a lady in New Fane who has barn boards available for sale. Uh, she hasn't indicated the cost of them, but I indicated that was from the town of Brookline, and we were trying to do some repairs on the Round Schoolhouse. I've gone through the Round Schoolhouse in terms of, of the siding and the toilet area, et cetera, and we could probably use about 15 boards. She's got, she's got a pile of them. They're all seven feet long, and I'm wondering how you would feel about purchasing maybe 15 of those boards, assuming they're reasonably priced. Uh, I actually made a trip out there last Sunday, but the person forgot and, but told her husband to take care of me, so to speak, and he sent me to the wrong place on the property of the new boards. So the ones I looked at, which I rejected, were not the ones that she wants to make available to us. So, uh, if no one feels I'd be wasting time in doing that, I can't imagine it would be much. Uh, and I would hope that we could find a budget somewhere to be tapped to purchase them. I certainly wouldn't be spending several hundred dollars, and hopefully for less than a hundred dollars, could get something that would satisfy. I don't know if you've looked at the bathroom ceiling on the men's side, there's a board missing there, you got a board missing across the front, both of the toilet areas themselves, when you sit on the seats, the bottom board is virtually gone, uh, the siding up in the upper, you know, there's, there's a number of areas that need sprucing up for a building of the, of what we wish to present to the public in the fall.
Don't be sitting on those, those seats, Stan.
Oh, boy.
All right. I, I certainly would, would, uh, I know that there is funding available in the Round Schoolhouse account, um, and I don't think we will be exhausting any of, much of those funds. I know we're going to go a little over with the signage and for $150 and then other expenses, but, um, Bruce, you want to say something?
If you're talking, because I was in the bathroom, if you're talking about expenses for lumber, better be careful because it's really pricey now.
It's woman's barn boards.
Oh, you already got.
She already found, she already found somebody in New Fane.
Forget it.
Okay. So, um, would you like a motion to expend some money, or what would you like to do, or do you want to?
I'm, I'm making a motion to not expend more than a hundred dollars for barn boards that can be purchased, used. She sent me a photo of the right pile, and they look healthy, they're approximately the same width, uh, there's not a lot of strapping kind of stuff, they're actual barn boards. Uh, so that, my motion that I, motion that we spend a hundred dollars, no more than a hundred dollars, for, uh, 15 barn boards to be purchased from a local individual who has boards to dispose of.
I'll second that. Any, um, what am I doing there? Oh.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving an expenditure of not more than $100 to purchase barn board for the Round Schoolhouse repairs, signify, from their account, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you all very much. Okay.
Steps, well, I don't know if you need an update on that. Haven't gotten to it.
Yeah, that's fine. We can step into the schoolhouse, it's on the list, and we'll talk about it the next meeting. All right, so now we're at, um, now we're only a half hour late, not even. Um, next will be the town clerk's report, Mr. Ta, Guy Tanson?
Um, we've been busy with a lot of title searches, there's been, there's been a lot of activity as we.
He needs to get closer to the mic. You have to get a little closer to the.
Um, we've been extremely busy with the real estate, uh, title searches, as we all know that the real estate market is going pretty crazy, but other than that, uh, everything's fine, the office. We've, uh, got a few people who've responded to the, uh, letter in regards to the dog not being licensed and so forth, so that's, uh, working out okay. Um, the other thing is that I have a, uh, in my working with the listers, uh, we discovered a property that was, uh, overvalued, uh, because the acreage, instead of being the three acres, it was valued, it was showing 60, 67 acres. So what we did is we filed a letter for, um, uh, emissions and, um, certification, rather, I'm sorry, a, uh, errors and omission certificate for the property, and I'm asking the select board to, uh, approve these errors and omission. Uh, basically, the property goes from $265,800 to $200,000, a difference of $65,800. When you do the calculations, it basically reduces our tax, our net tax income of about $133. Uh, I feel it's fair to the homeowner, uh, they were living out of state but have moved into the area now and living here, and when we did the change of address, Helen and I noticed that there was a, um, or maybe Helen noticed that there was a discrepancy in the amount of what he was being billed for and what he actually owned. On the lister card, it shows 3.67, but on the tax bill, it's showing 60 acres. So, uh, upon, you know, looking at that, we spoke with. So upon, you know, looking at that, we spoke with Cy Bailey and, and wondered if we could use the errors and omission as a, you know, a principle to relieve the people of this burden. And he said, by all means. So basically I have the form BRV dash 4261 dash E, which is errors and omissions, which has to be signed by the listers, which they have signed and also signed by the select board. So I'm asking the select board to approve that, that fact. You probably know a lot about emissions and errors and so forth. So it's just one of those things that for some reason, the transfer, the conveyance happened back in 2007 when it went from 67 acres and 50 acres were conveyed to a family, a budding. And for some reason it wasn't transferred on the tax bill. It was in the deed, but not in the tax bill. And I don't know what happened. But the only way we discovered it is when we did the address change and we looked at the deed to make sure that we could, you know, put the right people, connect the right people to the address change. And that's when it surfaced. So I think it's, it's only fair to the owners of the property that we, we file for the errors and omission.
All right. Well, I'd like to make a motion that the errors and omission certificate for the home owned by Randolph Stebbins with the correction be approved so that there is a reduction of 65,800 on the value. May I have a second? Seconded by Stan. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the errors and omission certificate presented by the listers for Randolph Stebbins property signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion has passed and the form is official. I'm going to sign it and then I'll pass it around for the other select, three other select board members here.
Thank you.
Sorry. Could you give me the first and seconding and just those details again, the name of.
Certainly. The, the owner is Randolph, R A N D O L P H. Last name is Stebbins, S as in Steve, T E B B I N S. And it is a reduction, a difference in assessed value of 65,800. Less.
Got it.
All right. And the.
It's on.
It's 44, yeah. It's 44 Ellen Ware Road in Brookline, Vermont.
Next to me, isn't it?
All right. Thank you very much. I will pass that around.
Right. And then she conveyed some of it to the English families and that didn't show up on the tax bill.
Anything else, Guy?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right. And I have the, we're going to try to get, coordinate the discrepancies in the dog licensing still. So we did put out a message for this email blast on that. All right. So we're going to move on to second report, selectman's report on the American Rescue Plan Act. I just wanted to say, excuse me, one second. Have something here. All right. Governor Phil Scott certified for state and local fiscal recovery funds. And so we will, the funding will include 50%. We, we should be expecting to get 50% of the funds due to the town of Brookline in the next month or so. And I will let you know what we have and what we get. I just wanted to let you know it has been approved at the state level. Email blasts. I sent out a couple of email blasts about the storm residents, residents about the storm. I spent a good part of Friday and sat, Friday answering over 50 emails from different residents and, and they're, they're happy with our, with our approach that we were communicative with them. And as soon as we hear a little bit more hopefully about FEMA, we will be able to contact everybody and let them know that there's some applications for them to file, but we're not for sure about that at this time. I sent out a email list reminding residents about the responsibilities for the dog licenses and that we have a need to add some residents for listers. So I have two people that are interested, but they're, they're, one is still away on vacation and the other person, I told them that this week was a little busy, so I'd get back to them. Last but not least here, I did want to make note that the Brookline Meeting House Committee is going to be at the history fair on August 14th in New Fane. We need a couple of additional volunteers. We're going to be there from, I think the fair goes from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM. So we could use some, but we're going to be there from 8:30 to 4:30. So if there is any select board members or residents, I will also be putting out an email blast that could come by and give some people at the fair a little break. That would be great. The third thing on item three under my report, I sent out to everyone the cleaning schedule for town hall, which will be on August 16th, and then it will be held every other month, October, December, February, April, June. I gave you and the cleaner a brief description of the cleaning expectations and a limit to 90 minutes to no more than 120 minutes at 40 dollars per hour. Anybody have any questions on any of those items? If not, I'm going to turn the speaker towards Bruce and he can tell us a little bit about the daycare building.
Got a couple of things first. I received a call. John and Vanessa Blue just moved into Christopher Blue's house. They've owned him. He's his son. They've just retired and Chris Blue used to be on the select board for many years. He was chair for at least four, five years. But anyway, I've been getting friendly with them and being my neighbor. And John had asked me if, because his, him and Vanessa's daughter is getting married week after next, if we would be so kind to lend them 40 chairs from either the church or the school. And I preliminarily said it's probably okay, but I'd have to clear it with the board, especially in as much as they are, probably pay a lot of money in taxes for that building and the, the background that the Blue family's had in this town. And I, I just wanted to see if anybody had any objection to it. I'll govern the situation and make sure I help pick them up and bring them back so that everything is all in order. And if anybody has had a rejection to it.
I think we did that for the Wheelers earlier. They had, they had a request for chairs from.
Yeah. I think we've done it a couple of times in recent years.
Thanks for bringing it up though.
Okay. I'll, I'll move on. That's one down. I wanted to make one very quick point, hopefully it's quick. I have a friend of mine, he is a friend of mine because I go to church with him. His name's John Michael Muse, goes by Max. And he works for the United States Department of Agriculture. He's got an office right in Bragg Row. I just wanted to make a point. And I told him what we were doing with the round schoolhouse and the grant that was, that we didn't spend the money and the whole story quickly before it, before church started several weeks back. And I told, he knows Lisa Ryan. I know he knows Lisa Ryan because it was mentioned when I went up to one of the seminars up there, his name came on. So they're all kind of a type, and we've actually talked about funding before. Won't get into that. But anyway, I told him that we got the money and we're getting the money and what we're doing. And Lisa, you know, been cooperative and she, his, his exact remark was, oh, they got money. Don't worry about that. So I just thought I'd bring that up in case there was any other avenue. They also gave us, I believe they gave us a grant for inspection of the round schoolhouse. Not the round schoolhouse, excuse me, the church back in 2014. I think it was then. A sensible grant, I think it was called, something like that. Yeah, it was like $450 or something like that. So they, I, I guess what I'm pointing to very quickly, it's under buildings here, is that we should keep our eyes open very now and into next year about grants with, based with the state because they seem to have the cash. Okay. I'm going to move on. An incident happened at Suzie's a couple of weeks ago where there was a clog in the toilet and they had already called Blue, I, excuse me, they already called Scott, Scott Bovat and Harry Bovat came over and tried to plunge it. Didn't happen. And they bought Vermont Sewer and Drain in the following Tuesday to take out some underwear. So, so it hasn't come up yet and I would assume the town clerk hasn't received any bills from either of them yet. I hope not. But if it does, I'm going to have to be the heavy and tell them, here's your bills because I'm sure the town's not going to be into paying the bill for that. Okay.
What was the date of that so I can tell the treasures not to pay any bills that come in from?
The date of that, that incident?
Let me know at some point if you can think of it.
Try to pick it up. I'm not sure. It'll be inaccurate. Vermont Sewer and Drain and, and what's his name came first, Harry Bovat came first. And I don't know if they, they're going to send a bill because he couldn't do anything and Vermont Sewer and Drain came the following Tuesday. Got it down.
What was the date of some of that?
Underwear.
Child, it's underwear.
How a child could stuff, I don't, stop Bruce. Stop Bruce. Okay. Now I'll move on. I would like to get a finance, I don't believe I have a current financial update as to what we have. I think the closest update I had was the end of April into May. I'll have to look again in my folders when I, tomorrow. It's, I'm trying to. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the oldest one I've got, or the newest one I've got. And I'm trying to update what exactly the money we have in, in the account for Suzie's because we're looking at spending 14, five when this is done, the painting's done. And I believe we're in the $20,000 vicinity now. Plus or minus the amount of expenses we have in the last three months, which have been low. Thank you. But anyway, I'll move, move forward. So the painting, Mo Momini started, started moving in yesterday and he has brought his crew of nine men to, to do the building and in one day they scraped, washed the building with Thrysogent faucet and bleach to get the, to get the, to get the mold out of it. The whole building was clean stem to stern. They're waiting for it to dry out and the next day or two or the first part of next week, they're going to start painting it. And I would assume Mo's going on vacation next week, but his crew is going to do it and should be done sometime next week, I'd imagine. And if anybody's interested, I've got before and after pictures sitting right here, or you could just take a look at the building. I got, my hair came up my head when I saw the thing scraped. Because I, I've been up there trying to do it. It was just great to see the place ready to go and have it painted. But anyway. Building's secure. We have no issues with that. And I believe, I don't have much more. Just a minute. I think that's it. The UV system is still operating fine. Everything's normal and we're not spending any money other than the paint job, which is great. Okay. Now let me see. Town hall building, pest control. As of yesterday, I haven't checked it tonight. We were, we were 17 straight days without a mouse. Can't say that at the moment. It's the saddle on freaking Hill Row because we've had 10 in the last three weeks.
Bruce, Bruce, add, add one to your town because I found one behind the shovels a couple of days ago.
Behind the who?
Shovels.
Outside or downstairs?
In the basement.
No. Was it in a trap? Was it in a trap?
Yes.
You've, you've just hurt my feelings, Glenn, but I'm catching up to you. Okay. I'll put it on my total. Bummer. Okay. So one in 17 days.
But I have no idea how long he was in there. He wasn't skeleton.
I love the description. I haven't recalled, I haven't recalled Scott yet, but I'm thinking I'm going to call him and ask him to wait a little while longer till when it gets cold out, if, in case we get more action. We still want to do that analysis of the outside to make sure if there's anything that we've missed to tighten it up a little bit. I also want to know that, that the mixture that he makes for caulk that seals the building because I want to use it on my house too. Insect damage, we've already gone through that. So I think I'm done.
You made a comment, Stan? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I went on to Home Depot, not to patronize a particular business. I'm sure they'd have it at Lowe's as well. There are two different manufacturers or two different potential foam containers that are guaranteed to be rodent proof. And each one is 15 dollars in cost. So if there was a hole that we wish to take care of ourselves, we're, we don't have to be dependent on someone coming down from Kane in New Hampshire to plug a hole. It's, it's cost very cheap and it's, when I looked on it to, for the description, because there were six different kinds of caulk, but two of them specifically said, and rodents. So.
Our next visit's free.
Okay. Whatever. Just it's available if we need it.
Great. We have, okay, thank you. I want, I want to learn that.
Send them the information. Yeah, that'd be great.
But he still owes us a visit. So for free. And again, I'm done.
All right. Well, thank you, Bruce and Stan. That'd be great. Mark, we're back down to highway roads, current roadway projects and I, and also I have on here purchasing sand for winter. We talked briefly about doing that. And I wasn't sure about the RFP that needs to go out or what, what we've done because I've been off the board for a couple of years.
Yeah, I have the, I have the RFP that we ran last year, which I could circulate.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
For us to adjust. I can send that to you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, if you wanted to add anything to what you had said earlier today or?
The only other thing I have here is I had made purchases for oil filters and hydraulic oil for the grader. I also purchased, the batteries were going flat on the grader while I was scraping the roads. And so it turned out that the alternator had gone bad. So I ended up purchasing an alternator and put it on and seems to be working now. But while the grader was down and when I picked up the oil filters, I, I also purchased a battery charger to keep it the shed for future problems. Sometimes you can't get in there to jumpstart it with a vehicle. It's backed in, ready to drive out and it's 24 volt. So you have to unhook the cables between batteries to one 12 at one time. And yeah. But this charger, it was $116 at NAPA SNL. And it has a feature on it where you can leave it plugged in on a slow amp charge and it'll shut off when it peaks out. So you can actually leave it plugged in. If it goes down, it'll come back up to, to keep it at a steady. And a lot of times where it sets in the winter, it would be a good idea to alternate that through the winter months just to keep the batteries fresh. I thought that was a fair price for an item like that. Let's see. And I think I may have already said that I called Car Tree Company and they're going to be here in town for one day's work on August 16th was the schedule, unless I hear you for. I did bring in a book. We haven't determined nothing, but this is a wide variety of handicap signage to look at. And this is the company that I've been ordering from. They're very nice people to deal with and the prices are very compatible with remote corrections. And I think they have even a wider variety. They have, you can also purchase line painting supplies in here for pavement. There's, it's a very good, a lot of, a lot of good stuff there. Um, let me see, also, uh, checking roads recently, um, I was a little surprised, I didn't think it would happen right away, but the trees were cut on Parker Road that we were waiting to have cut by Green Mountain Power so that we can, uh, do their better back road grant. Um, they're changing the power lines from directly down the middle of the road to one side of the road. And once they get out to the field at Parker's, they're gonna go underground, at least that's what I was told by the representative. Um, so that will allow us to maintain the road better because it's almost impossible to spread gravel with the dump truck out through because the lines are so, um, shallow. Um, so this will help with maintenance as well as, uh, we're gonna dig the stumps from the cut trees, this is part of the grant, uh, better back road grant. And then we will, um, put in the stone line for the, uh, erosion control. And I also have one culvert to replace, it's a undersized metal culvert, it's rusted. And then we will apply some surface gravel to put a crown on the road now to take care of that grant. So that was good to see that they have gotten their trees cut down. And then the, the last thing I wanted to, uh, bring up tonight, I mean, I, I had written here, I've spent the last, uh, since Thursday night, uh, helping with repairing from the flood, so there's a bunch of stuff I haven't got done yet that I will, it just got delayed for this week here. Um, but up on Putney Mountain, part of where the major flooding took place, there was a failed culvert and I had planned to change that culvert out before the flood. It's a 20 inch culvert, it's metal and it has a hole, uh, a third of the way up from the outlet. So the water's, instead of coming out the end when it was slow water, is eating underneath the culvert and coming out. Um, so I, I asked if we could upgrade that culvert because it's a site where it does take on a lot of drainage from the mountain. Mark Pickren said that we can replace any culvert and upgrade it, but we can't go over three feet in diameter without dealing with the state. So he recommended that if we wanted to go ahead and upgrade it from 20 inches to the three foot diameter, that we don't need, uh, his permission. However, I called the price and availability on the culverts and a, a three foot diameter by 20 foot li- plastic culvert is $945 for one lane. And it needs, uh, it needs like two and a half lanes. I do have a half of one at the shed, so if I could get two, that would upgrade that culvert. So I'm supposed to get back to him if we want to order, but again, it's like six to eight weeks for, he said if he can get the, the order by a certain date, uh, they'll be coming back altogether, so about six, six to eight weeks out. So.
You have to do what you have to do or man.
Yeah, you have to do it before the weather starts to turn.
Yeah. Now, we, we are doing some grant work, where we're gonna be getting money back and that's one of the areas. So we'll be getting monies back for the stone lining up that section, uh, but it might go back into culvert. That's if we approve, so.
So you want me to make a motion that?
Yeah, if, if you feel that's the right thing to do, I, I feel that, uh, it should be exchanged and, and also that same area, this is where they put new telephone poles up the right hand side of the road and when the, they were working there during the winter when it was wet and springtime when it was soft. And when they put their stabilizer feet down, they were so close to the, the edge of the road on the exit end of the, the outlet end of the culvert that it, it pushed the stabilization of header stones down over the bank. So now it was eroding, not only has it failed, but it's, the road's getting narrow on that low section. So, so if we go ahead with a new culvert, I can build that new stone header to secure the road.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the expenditure of not more than $2,000 for two three foot by 20 foot culverts for repairs and upgrades on Putney Mountain. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving not more than $2,000 for two three by 20 foot culverts for Putney Mountain upgrade signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much, the motion passed, you can order that.
Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else, Mark, you wanted to add?
A hundred dollars.
Yeah, everything is gone.
Hopefully, our, our small culverts, I don't think we're only, uh, they were like $210 a piece a year ago for 18 inch and this year they're 306.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's everything, I guess the demand is up and, uh, inventory's down, so they're buying the man government.
There you go.
Great.
All right, anything else, Mark?
Uh. No, I, I believe that others have everything.
Okay. Well, I'll quickly go through what I have here. Uh, I already told you the email I received, the governor certified the accepting the Vermont funding. Um, I did have an email, I've had some email exchanges with Tom Cavett, I'm gonna read the one that came out this afternoon. Um, it was written CC to me as well as Charlie Ezekio and Barbara Born. Uh, and this is from Tom Cavett, it says, as I've mentioned before, I'll need to step back from the planning commission due to parental care demands and Daniel Dobson will soon be moving to Brattleboro for health reasons, so the BPC will be down a couple of, of slots. Before resigning, I've been trying to find a replacement and a new neighbor at the end of Parker Road, Daniel Kilgart, has expressed an interest. Daniel is an executive at a software information firm and could be helpful with the next town plan, which usually seems to be our biggest endeavor, even if it only occurs every five years. Dot will be meeting with him and me tomorrow at 2:00 PM, which is tomorrow, Thursday, the 5th of August, at the town office. Uh, both Barbara and Charles are invited to attend and I can invite another select board member if you'd like to come as well to a two o'clock meeting if interested. If any event, if Daniel's meeting with Dot goes well, the select board will appoint him on the 18th and then a BPC meeting will be called to introduce Daniel and transition to a new chair as one of the orders of business. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call Tom. So that's what the communication is with our, our planning committee. Uh, third thing, on the bulletin board outside, there is a poster, the Vermont Interfaith Action Committee is having a COVID-19 memorial to honor Vermonters that were lost to the, to the virus. It will be at 3:00 PM in Montpelier, Vermont on Sunday, September 19th. More information can be seen at the poster of the town hall bulletin board. Um, and I also sent an email to the Brookline Historical Committee about the beetle larva eating the wood desks, that's on file. And an email was sent to the former committee members, uh, for the wheeled excavator discussion that we're going to table at this time. Um, the only response I got back from that was a suggestion from Doug Wellman not to get stuck on a wheeled excavator, but a backhoe may also be, should also be considered. Um, regular mail, just some magazines. Um, so at this time, oh, yes, sir.
You missed.
I really missed.
On the highways and roads, purchasing sand for one road.
Yes, I said David's gonna send us, send me the RFP we used last year and we'll take a look at that and then I'll, I'll, yep. All right, so payroll warrants, let me get that. Almost closed, we, good. Okay, hold on. All right, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Vermont, uh, pay, the Brookline Payroll Warrant dated, my eyes are going, uh, August 4th, 2021, in the amount of $2,006.68. The warrant number is 2022-06. May I have a second? Seconded by Stan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2022-06 dated August 4th in the amount of $2,006.68, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, very good, I'm gonna sign it and then pass this around, so I guess we can get some human signatures on them now. All right, um, I am going to make a motion that the Brookline Accounts Payable Warrant, hold on. Oh, Brookline, uh, Accounts Payable Warrant, what, number 2022-05 dated August 4th, 2021 in the amount of $7,974.68. Can I have a second?
One second.
Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion?
Yes.
Stan has a discussion at the point that we started to talk about earlier, you wanted just to?
Yeah, the, the treasurer's office was notified, uh, mid or early week, last week about a check coming in. We, at the time, thought it was gonna be for a full $5,000, not knowing and nor did the representative for Preservation Trust of Vermont know that a $3,000 check had already been cut. Uh, as I said early on in the discussion, we received the $3,000 check on the 29th of July and, uh, this Mr. Parker, who did the repair work on the round schoolhouse sill, uh, foundation and siding, uh, has been waiting since the 7th of, uh, July. So I'd like to motion that we add to this Accounts Payable Warrant, a additional recipient vendor in the name of Christopher Parker regarding the invoice description of the round schoolhouse and the purchase amount of $3,000 and the amount paid $3,000 and the check number to be assigned by the treasurer, uh, in the next most numerical appropriate number, uh, and that he disburse it, it says, here he disperses the others as of today's date, but I don't know if he's already cut them and just waiting to mail them, but make the date 8/5 if he is around tomorrow. Uh, I suspect he might be coming in to do that.
I don't know, I, uh.
Okay, well, at, at, at least be cut at his earliest convenience.
All right.
Which would then make the total amount $10,974.68.
All right, we have an amended motion for Accounts Payable Warrant 2022-05 to be amended to a total price of $10,974.68 to account for the $3,000 due to vendor Christopher Parker for work done at the round schoolhouse, which has already been received and deposited. May I have? That's our amended motion, now I'm a little stuck, David might have to help me out. Am I asking for?
I think you're fine, I think you maybe let people have further discussion and then we vote it.
All right, for, any further discussion? No, everybody understand what happened? Okay. So.
I think maybe technically, as I've seen it done in other places, you made the original motion. I made a second motion and I think you're required to acknowledge that you accept the friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Which, which then enables the final vote to be as was read lastly.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, uh, I, as the original person to make the motion, um, I accept the friendly amendment for this particular item for $3,000 to be added to the check warrant to make the total sum $10,974.68. Okay, so, so at that point, we shall now vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you very much, it was a little confusing, but that passed, let me sign this. And, oh, you can all sign it, we'll through my line, sorry about that. Okay, um, so setting agenda for the next meeting, August, I have August 11th, but it's not August 11th, it's August 18th, August 18th. Um, round schoolhouse, any other additional storm damage? We will talk about renting the wheeled excavator for one month. We will put, we will talk about the round schoolhouse additional repairs that need to be done. We will add to the agenda the Lister appointment and move for September 1st. Further discussion on purchasing additional road service equipment for September 1st, so that's my plan.
We'll have an update on the pest inspection.
And the pest inspection. I, I'll add that for the August 18th, uh, meeting. Um, anything else?
What about the sand of?
Yes.
Oh, and the sand bid. Thank you, and the sand bid. All right. Uh, at this point, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting. May I have a second?
A second, oh, sorry, that was an accident.
Any discussion? All right, Bruce, that was Bruce that was making the.
I didn't do that.
Uh, all those in favor of adjourned this evening's meeting, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.